Hi everybody, Tyler Mahoney here, owner of Truman Lake Fishing Intel. I just wanted to give a quick, high-level description of the video you're about to watch. This is a town hall meeting that took place in Henry County on February 19th, down in Montrose, Missouri. It is in regards to a very large solar panel project that is looking to be implemented in the county. Here at Truman Lake Fishing Intel, we really don't have a position one way or the other, although there were some strong feelings there expressed last night. We just felt that a lot of our audience that is in Henry County, as well as a lot of our members, might find this interesting, or maybe it might impact them. And so, uh, I felt like it was something that we should go and record and make available to everyone who maybe wasn't able to attend. So, um, that's what you're about to watch. It's pretty informative. There's gonna be two parts to this video. The first part is just the panel, uh, both the solar panel folks and, uh, folks in the county and beyond, talking about this. And because it was such a long meeting, we're gonna break it up into two videos. The second part will be the Q and A portion, where folks in the crowd ask questions to get things clarified. So, be on the lookout for that. There's gonna be two videos, the panel version and the Q and A version. Uh, I hope you enjoy it and learn something. Thanks for watching.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Uh, there are a few empty chairs if you wanna work your way up or get some down here in the corner. Anyway, if not, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you and to welcome you, uh, for attending our meeting tonight. I'd like to thank the people up here at the table, um, who've traveled a long way. Some have, I guess Greg didn't, but, uh, and appreciate their time that they're come down here to speak with us. Uh, in the back, when you came in, there was a raffle. If, um, if you want, want to ask a question and you didn't get a ticket, you can go back and get one. We'll, we'll do that by raffle. I'll go over that real quickly. So the question and answers will work this way. After the speakers are done, we will take questions and answers for up to one hour. The person will direct the question to one person on the panel, and then they'll have a couple minutes to give their answer. You may only ask one question. In the last fifteen minutes, um, after that hour's over, we're gonna take five questions that maybe, um, someone just can't stand not to ask and didn't get, didn't get their number picked, okay? Uh, if you need to get up and leave at any time, you're not gonna offend anybody. Just get up and leave. My name is Eileen Parks. I guess I should've said that at the beginning, but, um, I'm just a citizen who wanted to know more about the solar. There are, there are some literature back there in the back that you're welcome to take home. And, um, there's a name, um, and it's just a name, address, and phone number. Only if you would like to be contacted if there is another meeting or more things to come up. It's, you're not signing anything away, so, um, there's that back there. Let's see, I'm gonna write everything on the agenda. Um, the one thing, we have, uh, I believe we have some students here that are observing our meeting tonight, or maybe their speech or debate, I'm not quite sure. So I just want to remind you that we're all friends and neighbors, and that we need to conduct ourselves in a professional manner. Uh, I'm going to try to move the meeting along. It's not that I'm trying to be rude, but, you know, nobody wants to be here all night. So, we, uh, the speakers each have a lot of time to speak, and we'll move it along. But if, you know, if anybody gets unruly, we do have people here that will escort you out. Uh, so I'm gonna introduce the people at the table, and then we're gonna get started. So I'll start down there with the Ranger Power guys. This is Oliver Shag and Pete Endress. And then Rick Watson is our Henry County clerk. Greg Westusy is a local farmer. Uh, Roger Fisher is the Western District Callaway County Commissioner. And this is Susan Burns, and she is with the Mid-Missouri Landowners Alliance. So, that's our speakers tonight. Uh, Roger, I'm not sure if he's speaking, but he will take questions. So we're gonna get started, and Rick is the first one.
Well, thank you for having us here. Um, I kinda give you a brief, uh, background of how, um, the county was introduced by Ranger Power. About five years ago, um, he met with the commission and, uh, shared with them the interest to build a solar panel farm here in the county, um, due to the vacation of the Montrose Power Plant and the remaining transmission lines that, that is available at this location. There is an interest from them to, uh, build a solar farm. And, uh, he had shared that there's an interest from Ranger Power to contract with local landowners, um, with property in the neighborhood of 5,000 acres to, uh, as that is what they needed to be able to, to build out the farm that they're wanting to build. The commission was very interested in it, and, um, but we was glad to know that they had interest in the county, and, and that was pretty much it. And then a year later, a year later, you know, we kept getting updates, and we found out that they did have the number of acres secured, uh, and that they was, um, looking into what is a Chapter 100. The Chapter 100 is part of, uh, the Missouri Vice Statutes that makes this equipment, um, tax exempt. And in order for that to occur, it has to be owned by the county. And this Chapter 100, which is part of the Vice Statutes of Missouri, is a mechanism that allows the county to take ownership of this equipment, uh, and lease it back to Ranger Power. And they pay all the, uh, cost maintenance. There's, there's no out-of-pocket expenses for the county at all, but it gives them a tax-exempt, um, status, so they're not paying taxes on the equipment. One of the reasons why they wanna do this is to, uh, in order to, you know, they're gonna invest $500 million in this, uh, project, and they need to know what all their fixed costs are. So in order to know and make their costs fixed, they, they need this tax exemption, but they're gonna pay the county, I say the county, but I mean the taxing entities within this area, a million dollars a year for 25 years. So that is the length of the Chapter 100. And that would give them fixed costs, because in Missouri, there is no taxing mechanism for solar. So it is, it is tax-exempt at the moment. So they don't wanna invest all this money, and then five years down the road, the legislature created tax, not knowing what that tax would be. It could be five or 10 million dollars a year. So they wanna know what their fixed costs are. So they, uh, they wanna do a Chapter 100, which is perfectly legal. It's done all over the state. And that would fix their costs at a million dollars a year. It's kinda hard to read, but I made a chart over here. And I'm gonna stand up here by it. These are the entities, the public entities that are within this area. You have the State of Missouri, the Hill County. There's a Senior Citizen Service Tax Fund, County Library, Davis R2 School, Davis Township, and Walker Township. That is where this project would be housed. The next column is the levies that each of these taxing entities charge for their, uh, the taxes. Um, this is the 2023 levies. This is the, the total assessed valuation for all of these entities in the year. Now, this is all done in August. So every year, the tax levy changes, and that is all set by these public entities in the month of August. So in this past year, um, if you had property or you lived in this area, um, the county collected $925,000 in taxes. And these are taxes directly from us, the residents of, of this area. This next column is, uh, a PILOT, P-I-L-O-T, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. And that is the million dollars that Ranger Power would be paying, um, each year. So, in 2027, that is when the project would be completely up and running. And that's the number that's used, is the 2027 numbers. Um, this is how the breakdown of these taxes would be distributed, uh, to these entities. So, 2023's taxes are $920, $25,000. On top of that, Ranger Power is gonna pay an additional million dollars that are gonna go to these taxing entities as well. So in time, it is not gonna be necessary for all these taxing entities to continue to tax us at the same rate in which they are. So, everybody will benefit in this, this project, because your levies are gonna be rolling back. Uh, you, you could roll them back in half and still be able to function and take care of the roads and school and all these other things at the same time. This other chart over here comes from a, uh, a document that is done by Gilmore and Bell, which is a, a company that represents the county. And they did a cost-benefit analysis to determine what each of these taxes, uh, are, are come from. So my last column come from the, uh, the cost-benefit analysis that was done by Gilmore and Bell. Through the life of the project, there is a 2% accelerator every year. So in the 25 years, Ranger Power will pay over $36 million to these public entities within the next 25 years. And that is on top of what you are taxed as well. As you can see, there, there'd be a benefit to the property owners, whether you own property that you're leasing your land to or not, because these, these public entities are gonna have to roll their levies back. Uh, because the state of Missouri just won't let you tax for no reason. You have to have a reason to be able to, to, to charge the same amount year after year and bank all the money that you'd be banking. That's really about all I can think of as far as, uh, the benefits for the taxing entities would be, uh, a pretty good financial reward. Good for the benefit, if you benefit for the taxpayers as well, because like I said, they'd be rolling their, the levies back, and Ranger Power would be picking up the biggest tab of that. Next year, the, or next week, the commission, uh, will continue to work on, um, a road maintenance agreement. Uh, we're covering ev- every aspect of this project, on to make sure that there's no damage to the roads during the construction phase of the project. Also looking at, um, part of it would be a bond requirement when the project is done and it needs to be disassembled. The bond would cover any expenses, uh, foreseeable expenses in the future to make sure that it is taken back down to the bare ground.
Yeah, you can just go ahead and, and give it to the, go ahead.
Thank you, Rick. Everybody hear me okay? Good? Awesome. Well, Eileen, thank you so much for putting this on tonight. Um, my name's Oliver Shag. I'm the project manager working on the Beaver Tail Solar Project. Uh, with me is my colleague Peter Endress. He's our VP of Development, as well as Danielle Shangala over here. She's our COO, and then Mark Brady is our attorney from Post and Out. We were invited this evening to speak to you all about this project. As Rick mentioned, we've been in development here for, going on six years. Ranger was inceptioned back in 2017. In 2018, this was really one of our first development projects. Um, we are a company based out of Chicago. We're an American company, about 35 employees. Um, and we're focused on what's called utility-scale solar. And what that effectively translates to is we build power plants. Um, we are an independent power producer, an IPP. So we're a private company. We do not have the ability to exercise eminent domain. I'm gonna say it one more time. We do not have the ability to exercise eminent domain. Ranger has six projects in operation, three in construction, one of which in Warren County. It's, uh, our Bluebird Project. Um, and then 25 projects in active development. Uh, another in, uh, in Callaway County. It's our Show Me State Project, um, which is, uh, Roger Fisher, good to see you tonight, sir.
Yep.
So, as an IPP, you know, what, what is Ranger doing? What do we get at? So, the energy infrastructure in this country is changing, it's changing rapidly. Uh, Montrose is a great example of that. The coal plant closed down, and that's happening across the country, across the Midwest. Solar is a reliable, cost-effective means to, for power generation. It's one of the cheapest forms of energy to put on the grid. It harnesses free energy from the sun, no emissions, mineral water usage, mostly during construction. It's, it's just plug-and-play. You put it out there, and it operates for, for its purpose. So, you know, with, with Rangers, with, with where we are across the country, why are we here? Why are we in Henry County? And that basically boils down to three main points. The first is that these are true partnerships. We approach these landowners, they make an honest decision for themselves and for their families, and they're exercising their use of their own property how they see fit. So first, it's, it's land under interest. Second, we locate these projects adjacent to existing electrical infrastructure. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have a product, our product's electricity, and we need a road to get our product to market. And that road are the, the transmission lines. And there's an abundance of them here in Henry County. And then last is that we, we cite these projects where there's the least amount of environmental risk, environmental impact. And frankly, solar panels like open spaces that aren't covered by shade or wetlands, and agricultural land is, is generally where we try to cite these projects. So to kinda paint the picture of what to expect from this, this size and the scale of the project, of what is a solar farm? And, of course, the first are the solar panels. So there's three components of a solar panel. The silica wafers, they're the ones that actually harness the energy. There's the aluminum framing, like basically encompasses the entire panel. And then on top of that, it's a piece of tempered glass. Next is, is the inverter. And, and the inverters are what calls the, the brains of the operation. So, the inverter inverts or converts DC power, direct current, to AC power, accelerated current. These panels are, are mounted to racking, which effectively is, uh, it's a tube that holds the electrical components of the project. Solar panels, they start facing east, and they track the sun throughout the day, and they face west at night. And then, when the sun goes down, they turn themselves back and wait for the sun to come up the next day. Um, these piles, we, we mount them specifically to piles, which are, um, effectively screws that we put into the ground, uh, so that they support the actual system itself. Uh, there's also additional electrical infrastructure, collection systems, back to a substation. I will say, we do fence these projects. It'll be a deer fence. You know, this is an expensive asset. We really need to make sure nobody's in there messing with it, or the fact that it is, it's an active electrical system. I will say, solar is a safe technology. It's been around for 50 years. It's the same type of technology we put on our roofs, our homes, our churches, our schools. My high school had a, a solar array. Our businesses, I know that there's a church not far from here that has an existing solar array right next to it. Underneath the panels, we will plant a, a native seed mix of, of pollinators. It's a great, um, it's a great mix of, of bee habitat, birds. Um, and then it also reduces runoff and really improves the drainage of, of the underlying land. Uh, and one kind of final cool point is, we'll actually partner with local sheep herders. And, uh, they'll bring in their flock, let them graze. Uh, when they're done, come out and move into the next site. So what I really wanna focus on now is, what is this project? What's the size, uh, and what's it gonna take in terms of acreage? Uh, so we measure these in megawatts. This is a 400-megawatt project. That equates roughly to 60,000 Missouri homes being powered by this project itself. Um, that equates to over half a billion dollars in investment into Henry County. The first phase will occupy about 4,000 acres. And, and I know that the sticker shop in here, 4,000 acres, that's a lot. In reality, we cannot take advantage of every single square inch of that acreage. Um, there's wetlands we have to be set back from, roads, homes, transmission lines. Uh, but it's, you know, we, we try to occupy as much as we can, because we wanna maximize the efficiency of the project. Uh, but again, it's not gonna be every square inch of this project, of the, of the participating land. You know, Rick really highlighted, I think to a great degree, the, uh, the community benefits here. Over a million dollars annually, uh, in this pilot program. But, you know, this project's gonna create a lot of jobs at construction. And we try to source these as locally as we can. Um, and, you know, if they're not local, they'll come from a large population center, likely Kansas City. And these are individuals that'll come in, spend their money at the local restaurants, gas stations, the, uh, the hotels. It's money that's gonna really impact the community. Uh, once operational, this project is about five to six full-time employees. Uh, and then the last point that I really wanna make clear is, as, as Rick kinda mentioned, we are required contract with speaking with every landowner to, to decommission this project. Uh, at the start of construction, we will post a financial security to cover the project restoration obligations. So what I'm saying is, this is not forever. This is, this is a project that's gonna be located on, on agricultural land and preserve it for a longer period. To close this out, again, I really appreciate you all coming out. And again, I appreciate you putting this on. We're really excited about this project. We're excited for the community, we're excited for our landowners, we're excited to inject a new form of energy onto the grid. And, um, I, I think it's a very unique opportunity for the county. Thank you.
Did Pete have something he wanted to say?
For fall, I thank you all for coming. So that was the, uh, video of someone driving by in a solar installation. You're good. I just asked you, how would you like to listen to that all day, every day, for the rest of your life? So, as I sat down to write this, I honestly did not know where to start and what knowledge to pass on, as the extent of the information we have received is vast. So as I read this, I will probably leave a few things out because of time constraints. First, I wanted to educate you a little bit about what brought us here to this point. Most of you are aware that about 30 years ago, Walker Township put a zoning ordinance in place. So about a month and a half ago, the members of the board were asked to sign a waiver to negate this ordinance, which a couple of them decided it wasn't the right thing to do, since it was put in by the vote of the people. After getting contacted on a very consistent basis to change their mind, I found out about it and decided to step in. At which time, I stood in front of the county commissioners and requested the town hall meeting be held concerning the subject, so everyone involved and their constituents could be made aware of the facts involving such a huge undertaking. The commissioners informed me at that time that they knew very little about it or not enough to be able to hold a town hall. I was stunned that they knew so little and that Ranger Power had not informed them specific details concerning a $500 million, 5,000-acre project that would affect so many friends, family, and neighbors. At this time, I honestly was not very knowledgeable about solar installations and what effects it would have on our community as a whole. So I decided to proceed with some research by contacting different officials, as well as searching the internet to see what other people slash counties have encountered. This began an overwhelming amount of information, as there were countless states and individuals across the US dealing with the same thing, and the astonishing facts of why they disapproved them appalled me. It seemed like every day, there was something new. Everything from how they operated to the horrible experiences people had dealing with these projects. At this time, a small group of concerned citizens thought it was paramount that we hold a town hall so that the facts be, could be presented to you. So you, the individuals who affected the most, could have the floor to listen and ask questions, and in turn, be able to voice your concerns. That is why we are standing here today. These green wind installations are almost all federally subsidized, our taxpayer money. This, in my opinion, and the opinion of quite a few qualified others, is a failed way of producing sustainable energy. There's a video.
Have you ever heard of unobtanium? It's the magical energy mineral found on the planet Pandora in the movie Avatar. It's a fantasy in a science fiction script. But environmentalists think they found it here on Earth in the form of wind and solar power. They think all the energy we need can be supplied by building enough wind and solar farms and enough batteries. The simple truth is that we can't, nor should we want to, not if our goal is to be good stewards of the planet. To understand why, consider some simple physics realities that aren't being talked about. All sources of energy have limits that can't be exceeded. The maximum rate at which the sun's photons can be converted to electrons is about 33%. Our best solar technology is at 26% efficiency. For wind, the maximum capture is 60%. Our best machines are at 45%. So we're pretty close to wind and solar limits. Despite PR claims of what big gains coming, they're just aren't any possible. And wind and solar only work when the wind blows and the sun shines, but we need energy all the time. The solution, we're told, is to use batteries. Again, physics and chemistry make this very hard to do. Consider the world's biggest battery factory, the one Tesla built in Nevada. It would take 500 years for that factory to make enough batteries to store just one day's worth of America's electricity needs. This helps explain why wind and solar currently still supply less than 30% of the world's energy, after 20 years and billions of dollars in subsidies. Putting aside the economics, if your motive is to protect the environment, you might wanna rethink wind, solar, and batteries, because, like all machines, they're built from non-renewable materials. Consider some sobering numbers. A single electric car battery weighs about a half-ton. Fabricating one requires digging up, moving, and processing more than 250 tons of earth somewhere on the planet. Building a single 100-megawatt wind farm can power 75,000 homes, requires some 30,000 tons of iron ore and 50,000 tons of concrete, as well as 900 tons of non-recyclable plastics for the huge blades. To get the same power from solar, the amount of cement, steel, and glass needed is 150% greater. Then there's the other minerals needed, including elements known as rare earth metals. With current plans, the world will need an incredible 200 to 2,000% increase in mining for elements such as cobalt, lithium, and dysprosium, to name just a few. Where is all this stuff going to come from? Massive new mining operations, almost none of it in America. Some imported from places hostile to America, and some places we all want to protect. Australia's Institute for Sustainable Futures cautions that a global gold rush for energy materials will take miners into remote wilderness areas that have maintained high biodiversity because they haven't yet been disturbed. And who's doing the mining? Well, let's just say that they're not all gonna be union workers with union protections. Amnesty International paints a disturbing picture. The marketing of state-of-the-art technologies are a stark contrast to the children carrying bags of rocks. And then the mining itself requires massive amounts of conventional energy, as do the energy-intensive industrial processes needed to refine materials and then build the wind, solar, and battery hardware. Then there's the waste. Wind turbines, solar panels, and batteries have a relatively short life, about 20 years. Conventional energy machines, like gas turbines, last twice as long. With current plans, the International Renewable Energy Agency calculates that by 2050, the disposal of worn-out solar panels will constitute over double the tonnage of all of today's global plastic waste. Worn-out wind turbines and batteries will add millions of tons more waste. It'll be a whole new environmental challenge. Before we launch history's biggest increase in mining, dig up millions of acres in pristine areas, encourage childhood labor, and create epic waste problems. We might wanna reconsider our almost inexhaustible supply of hydrocarbons, the fuels that make our marvelous modern world possible, and technologies making it easier to acquire and cleaner to use them every day. The following comparisons are typical and instructive. It costs about the same to drill one oil well as it does to build one giant wind turbine. And while that turbine generates the energy equivalent of about one barrel of oil per hour, the oil rig produces 10 barrels per hour. Costs less than 50 cents to store a barrel of oil, or its equivalent in Costs less than 50 cents to store a barrel of oil, or its equivalent in natural gas, but you need $200 worth of batteries to hold the energy contained in one oil barrel. Next time someone tells you that wind, solar, and batteries are the magical solution for all our energy needs, ask them if they have an idea of the cost to the environment. Unobtanium works fine in the movies, but we don't live in the movies. We live in the real world. I'm Mark Mills, Senior Fellow at the Manhattan Institute for Craigory University.
So I want to make one thing crystal clear tonight. I am not saying in front of you to degrade or scrutinize the individuals who signed up their land. Honestly, I don't think you were made aware of everything these solar installations entail. Some of you I know personally, and most of you are extremely amazing people who I am proud to call friends. I am coming up here to fight this ideology of a federal government coming in here and dividing us, pitting neighbor against neighbor and friend against friend. This whole idea where someone can flash money in front of people and to be able to cause a community civil war appalls me. Here are a few of the more specific concerns in very brief contexts. These concerns are not infounded, as they have either been studied or from people's personal experiences. Eminent domain: The state definition of a power plant is so broad that a solar or wind farm would be declared a power plant, which in turn would open the door for condemnation and imminent domain. I'm not saying this will be done, but what I am saying is it is a possibility. Noise: You all have heard the noise already. They'd be heard up to a mile away. Fire: Are you trained on how to control to put out a hazard-toxic electrified solar installation? We are volunteer fire department who has a youth program. Do we want our children or friends fighting a possible fire? Property values: Do you think someone will want to buy a residential property surrounded by solar panels? Studies have shown you can expect between a 16% to 30% decrease in value. How much less would you pay for such a house? Duck/Deer Hunting Wildlife: As far as ducks and birds are concerned, it has been documented that they will land into them thinking it is a body of water, while others are concerned that it will affect their migratory pattern and not use this as part of their fly zone. Also, these installations will have, to my understanding, an eight-foot-tall perimeter fence surrounding them. How will that affect the way deer or wildlife travel? Leases: I want to preface this by saying I honestly did not personally know anyone involved with Ranger Power or Beaver Tel Solar, so I can't speak about them at all. They might be great people, I really don't know. But I am aware of specific instances that other companies involved with solar have done. To the people who have signed leases or those thinking about it, are you protected from leans being put up against your property? How about liability in case someone is injured or if the panels leak and contaminate soil or groundwater? What happens if the company you're dealing with goes bankrupt? I want you to take a look at these papers. I think you've got some of them when you walked in. But there's quite a few citizens that have done a whole lot of research on this. Just, and there's, there's a list of companies that went bankrupt in the past, just this past year concerning solar. Anyway, there's a lot of stuff on the internet, and there's a lot of research that was put into that. Who will be the final owners of the panels/fire plant on your ground, along with many more Environmental studies: How will this affect wildlife, and what about the possibility of these panels leaching into the ground and contaminating the soil and water? Regulations, to my understanding, there's no regulations or setbacks these companies have to abide by. Economic studies: How will taking 5,000-plus acres, plus, because they are still contacting me, plus my neighbors, out of production affect the local economy? According to Michigan State University in 2020, it ranges from $650,000 to $1 million for every 1,000 acres taken out of production. And finally, and probably the biggest reason I stand before you today is from my perspective, is I'm just a simple farmer I fought my whole life to achieve. I, as well as a lot of my neighbors, immensely enjoy the quiet solitude of living in a rural community surrounded by mostly good people who watch out for one another. To be able for the federal government to come in here and disrupt what a lot of farmers love to do, and to put landlords in a tough predicament on whether to keep running to good local stewards of the land, or to take a pot of oil to the end of the rainbow if everything goes according to contract, deeply disturbs me. Just one more video.
One last thing I want to bring up is decommissioning costs. How much does it cost to get rid of these things? One, right now, there's nowhere to put these solar panels. They contain all sorts of minerals, some are rare earth minerals, that should not be placed into a landfill. There's something called polyfluoral alkides, the PFAs. These are substances that are inside the solar panels that we know are toxic. The EPA has deemed them toxic, so that when they leach into the groundwater, they build up in your system. You can't get rid of this stuff. There's nowhere to recycle these solar panels. You're talking hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of solar panels that are coming down the pipe. And we're going to have to figure out how much that costs and who's going to pay for them. I know for a fact, right now in the state of Kansas, just from the wind energy alone, it would cost between $3 to $4 billion for us to get rid of all the wind turbines in the state, decommissioning when they run their lifespan. Who's going to pay for that? Are you? Taxpayers? No. Wind companies? No. They'll bolt. They'll file for bankruptcy, they'll be gone. Same will happen with the solar. They're not going to tear them down. They'll be left for you to clean up, at your own cost, or landowners' cost, or leaseholders' cost. We haven't got those figured out yet. And if you ask somebody about that, nobody has the answers. So that's just one thing. What are we going to do? Are we going to leave that for our kids to have to clean up? There's a lot to consider when you go down the path of these renewables. And the footprint alone is ridiculously large. You've got massive, massive amounts of land. Think about the Wolf Creek Nuclear Power Plant. Have you ever seen that place? The power plant alone sits on like 12 acres or something like that. There's a big lake out there, wildlife comes around, the fish are giant inside those lakes. It's fantastic. That one facility, that small facility, generates enough power for 86 out of 105 counties in the state of Kansas. Small, tiny footprint. These giant solar farms are at best 20% efficient, most of the time. And in the winter, when there's clouds for days and days on end, they're not going to produce any electricity at all. Why are we occupying all this land that we could use for future development, future parks, whatever, for something that's going to produce a mere trickle of electricity? Just one more thing to consider when we're talking about these industrial-scale renewables.
So I have just a little more undone. I want to ask yourself this question. If you live in a rural area, something you work very hard for, some for their whole life, why do you live there, and in turn, would you want that changed into an industrial zone? How would you feel about that? To the people who say it's my land, I should be able to do with it as I please, I don't totally disagree with that way of thinking, as I myself am a landowner. However, when it negatively impacts your friends, family, and neighbors, that is when it is a problem with that way of thinking. Personally, I would like to see a committee set up and studies related to how this will affect everyone and everything be completed before we move forward, so elected officials can make a more informed decision. I would like to thank both Susan and Roger from Callaway County for attending tonight. I will answer questions, but these two people have been dealing with us for almost two years, so they can speak from experience of dealings associated with these projects. Finally, I'm not saying there isn't climate change, but what I am saying is do better. There are other options. Don't come to me with an idea that will change my whole life, the people I love, our communities, what I think is the whole backbone of this country, rural America, and fundamentally try to disrupt that. Our forefathers, and quite honestly, most of us, have put our blood, sweat, and tears into this way of life and into this land. Ignorance is bestowed upon those who are unwilling to be educated. So thank you all very much for enlightening yourselves tonight.
I'm Roger Fisher, Western District Commissioner for Callaway County. As has been mentioned before, we've been dealing with this for pushing two years now. It's amazing how far they kept it. I have to give them credit there, kudos to you guys, getting the landowners to sign leases that they said they wouldn't speak to anybody, because they didn't. They didn't say a word. And it totally caught us off guard. So, good job, I guess, there. There's a lot of different issues to this, and I'm not going to speak negatively about any particular solar company. What I'd really like for you to do is to take a few minutes to kind of think about some of the things that we've had opportunity to think about, some things we wish we'd done differently, you know? It's kind of like you have to experience, it's kind of like raising children. Damn, I've done better the second time, I think, you know? Well, here we are. I've got a lot of stuff here, I'm not going to read it all. Interesting, it doesn't seem that your area is quite as heavily populated as ours might be. I know that you guys have a lot of duck hunting and waterfowl history here. Where we are, we're heavy into whitetail deer. We're one of the top counties in the state of Missouri for producing whitetail deer and the size of deer. So we have a similar interest there, where I might be talking about deer hunting, you will have to think about waterfowl hunting, you know, your leases. One of the things that I know that we brought up early on, and a lot of people hadn't considered it, was that the high fence that'll go around it, it'll be miles and miles. We're talking about 2,000, 3,000 acres, several miles around there, where the farms are that they haven't gotten, they have to go around in and out and around. In our area, that's very restrictive to deer migration. Getting from water to the feed places where they do their mating, to the woods, heavy woods in the wintertime, and they can't go through the fence. One of the things that we drew up in one of our early things was to have a pass-through, 50-foot-wide pass-through every 1,000 feet. Now, they would have to traverse along the side of the road for 1,000 feet to get to a pass-through, but at least they could get through. And you know how they are. I mean, they're going to find a hole in the fence, if there's a hole in the fence, they're going to find the damn thing, because they can't jump this one. Another thing that we considered is to try to get a 50-foot, basically an easement along the sides of the roads. We have so many deer up here, it's ridiculous, I'll be honest with you. We were very fortunate, we were blessed when it comes to deer. But we kill a lot of deer. Every year, we hit a lot of deer, cause a lot of automobile damage, and occasionally somebody gets hurt. If we have high fence up along those black tops, the deer are still going to come out of the woods, and they're going to run down along the side of the road. And we're going to have people get hurt, and we're going to have a lot of cars tore up. The deer have no place to go, you can't blame the deer. They're trying to get to the other side of the solar panel. So, I mean, that's something to consider. Where does all these things come into play, and who do you talk to about it and when? They have some stuff that's, they call animal-friendly fencing, allows small animals to pass through, size of a cat and smaller typically. And I've been very, very surprised in my, down to Capitol, and we're seeing all these guys with Ducks Unlimited, and with Turkey International, with Wildlife International, all these guys, NRA, you name it, but nobody's talking about what do we do when we're hunting, and rifle bullets will travel a mile easy, and somebody's deer rifles will travel farther than that. I don't know how far a bird pellet travels. I don't know if it's quarter-mile, 100 yards, I don't know. But it's all things that I think you guys need to be aware of when you're here, because those solar panels, well, bullets might not pierce them, like a bird pellet might, but it will probably land on it. I know there's a thing called electrolysis, where like different types of metals, even though they're separated by glass or plastic film, you'll still get electrolysis to it, kind of like, one of the things you see typically for electrolysis is around the battery cable under your car or your tractor, you get that gray corrosion comes up. How will this affect the solar panels? And though we signed an agreement with somebody today to lease your property, then if they turn around and resell that lease, or gets resold multiple times, and somebody actually spends the money to build the solar panels, how do we know they're not going to come back? Let's say we're out deer hunting. Let's say you have target practice. Didn't realize it, you just poke 30 holes in four pans, or 10 pans. Are they going to come back and charge you with a felony for destruction of personal property, even though it's a mile away? Those are the type of things I have to worry about in Callaway County, because we're so heavily invested in deer hunting. I don't know what your situation might be different. Well, the bird shot from hunting geese and duck, and it goes up in the air as that builds up on these solar panels, well, they don't turn upside down, they turn sideways, they roll up, they'll probably roll down along the edge maybe. Is that going to cause you problems? Are they going to be coming back after us, after five years, after they get all these solar panels in, say, "Look, you guys are causing too much damage to our solar panels, we're going to get legislation passed, you won't be able to hunt with them one mile"? Kind of makes sense, honestly. If we were in the solar panel business, something to think about. And I don't know, as I came in tonight, I actually ran into a very good friend of mine hunting, duck hunting, fishing, and I told him, I've been looking on the internet, trying to find studies where the geese or the ducks at night, because we all know, the geese especially fly at night, they land in the fields along this fly line here, and they land on the lakes. Will they anticipate those solar panels reflecting the light of the moon as being a lake? I don't know. Someone surely has some studies out there, that somebody's certainly probably looked into this. The guys here tonight may know the answer to that, I don't know, but I'd like to see some university studies on that. And how might that affect your deer, your bird leases? Another guy that I talked to a couple months ago, he says that he saw an eye-hidentine, where the, a lot of birds will just, they'll swim along and they'll dip their beak into the water to get a drink. They never land on the ground, they just dip, they just dip their beak in it and keep on flying. And the bugs, and the thought that that's water seems to be some of the bird problems. I don't know what issues you'll have here, or may not have. But it's just something to think about, something to look at, because the internet has got a lot of good information. When you're looking on there, you don't want to look at the, don't want to consider the lot of the, just the hypotheticals out there that somebody's gotten all up in their horse about, starting to write a big, long article. Make sure it's actually coming from a university or some accredited resource, you know? But I'm sure there are a lot of informations out there on these things. One of the things that we've looked into now, which we did two years ago when we first got into this, but you don't know it, kind of like I said before, you have to experience it to know, you know? Please consider a good neighbor policy in your contracts. Say, "Okay, you know, we're going to agree to do some things with this contract, but we want some stipulations in here that protects my neighbors, my children, my nephews and nieces who live near the farm." What about setbacks from schools and daycare for children, adults in church, adult daycares, children daycares, and churches? Setbacks from your homes, from businesses where there's over several employees work. Setback fences for animal and deer, human protection of 75 to 100 feet from the edge of the road. Allow the distance, safe distance, to animals and nature, the ones that are migrating to get out of the road, so while you pass by. Require solar companies to provide safety equipment and training for your fire department, your volunteer fire departments. An initial full training, the safety equipment, whatever that is that they use for solar panel fires, to make sure they know where all the switches and location maps, so that they can shut these things down and safely go in, and if the fire continues after they turn the electricity off, to be able to fight it, because we certainly don't want to run in there with electricity and water with your annual refreshers. On the environmental side, annual multi-point contamination testing of grainy cherries and soil. There's a state of Missouri MS4 permit. You almost have to be a county commissioner to understand what that convoluted mess is. But it's there for a reason, it's there to protect our environment, especially from developers, not protecting from it. developers, not taking from it, it's such the guidelines to which they need to go by so that they don't contaminate our environment. Habitat and birds of prey. I don't know what studies have been on the effect of eagles, bald eagles, birds of prey, bat studies. Restricting nighttime lighting, something else, I think. You know, I don't know what there is to keep them from having a lot of lights around these things, I don't know what they require, if there's lights on them or if they're not lighting. Build some sound barriers or dirt burns around the transformers and battery banks that produce noise. And on the hunting, is to make sure that they agree not to sue or charge with felony any damage as a result of bird shot or deer hunting, unless it was done intentionally or maliciously. That they will not pursue legislation to outlaw hunting around facilities. That they will allow pass-through passages every thousand feet. So, I guess I would encourage you to look at, have a regional landowner alliance, then you can discuss among yourself what kind of things that we think is realistic for my area. What's something we should, we look at? Do we want it bad enough, or do we want the money? And just work on that as an alliance. Seek the highest lease rental rate return by banding together, negotiate directly with the utility owners. Optimize lease terms, allowing greater return to landowners by removing the middleman. Ensure good neighbor policies are in place to protect neighbors and future generations, keep our rural culture, churches and schools in place, a place that we all want to live. You need to make sure that you guarantee your county revenue is adequate to support schools, nine-one-one services, law enforcement, for the duration of land leases, because it will freeze the development of higher real property and personal property uses of the land into the foreseeable future. So, there's a lot of things that I feel like is something that you want to do, or at least consider, and unless you have an organization where you can sit down and talk about these things, find out what the other guys are getting. Are you getting a fair rate? Are you getting what the other guys are getting? And I really kind of appalled, and I don't know if appalled's the right word, it's very interesting. You know, I grew up in a rural area. We've got cattle, we farm, we had a farm, and we plowed up acres, and we did the corn, and we did the whole thing. My dad's still doing it. I don't know of anything that we really sold, the cattle, the corn, we didn't have a competitive bidder, that we didn't talk to other people and find out what the going rates of things are. I don't know what they're offering you guys. But I don't know if you're getting a fair shake. I'm not saying you're not. You may be getting the best deal in the whole United States. But you have to understand that these utilities from coast to coast, from California to New York, to Florida, to Texas, they're all going to be required to sell renewable energy to their consumer. Thousands, probably tens of thousands of utilities across the United States are going to be looking for renewable energy. You happen to have Lakefront property, Lake Ozark frontage property in nineteen sixty, what was it selling for a lot? Three hundred fifty dollars, fifteen hundred dollars? What's it worth today? You know? You own Lakefront property for solar panels, guys. If you're anywhere near those big power lines, they'll get the closest guy, and they can take the next part of the stout, and they just daisy chain them right on across. You might have Lakefront property, you might have tier one, or a tier two lot, but you've got access to the lake. It makes it very valuable. And what has worked today is like, Lake Ozark's nineteen sixties. But I don't think this is going away, I don't know that. The federal government has got some very strong mandates, it's going to be very aggressive into getting solar and wind. In conclusion, I'm asking you, please don't sign a contract that prevents you from discussing with your neighbors and others what kind of deal you're being offered, because with you do that, you allow them to divide and conquer you without being informed of other You don't know if you're settling for less. Please don't sign anything without an escape clause, or a performance clause, that requires them to have some kind of performance that reverts back to you, if they don't meet those things, that you can get out of this contract. Any decent attorney, I'm sure you've got plenty here, will help you find out what a performance clause is, and escape clause is, so if something doesn't happen here in the next eight or ten years, you could get that property back. But once you sign off the surface rights of your property, guys, you've signed off the surface rights of your property, okay? I think this is kind of hard to digest. So, I guess, you know, make sure you're getting what you need out of it. I know that a lot of the things I'm seeing on the internet right now are claiming within ten years, this just popped up in the last ten months, the electric demand for operating artificial intelligence alone will equal all the electricity from all the sources currently producing electricity in North America. Guys, they're going to be looking for electricity for a long, long time, and what's it going to be worth in ten, twenty, or forty years from now? And are you getting a fair shake? I'm not saying they're giving it to you, I'm just saying, it's something you might want to question. Do your homework. So, I'm going to let it go at that. Thank you for your time, and I'll be here with the rest of the panel for questions in a few minutes. Susan?
My name is Susan Burns, I'm from Callaway County, along with Roger. I live on a century farm. People always ask me, I'm a seventy-six-year-old little old lady here, and why are you up here fighting so hard for the solar? I live on a century farm, my family's been farming that same ground for a hundred and forty years. I came to the house that I now live in, the original home, seventy-six years ago from the hospital. So, it's always been my home. My grandson is fourteen, he lives on the place with his mom and dad, they have a home on there. He wants to be a farmer, I want him to be a farmer, so we are caretakers of our place. I'm facing twenty-three hundred acres of solar directly across the road from me, and I'm about a hundred feet from the road. My great-grandpa, when he built the house, liked to sit on the porch and talk to people when they drove by on the dirt road. So, I get to be right on the road, and so there are, the company that I'm dealing with, it's not Ranger Power, said that they will set the solar panels back fifty feet from the road. So, I'll be a hundred and fifty feet from my front porch, is what I get to look at as solar. I'll never see the sun go down again, the same sun that I've watched my whole life, the same sun that my grandmother, my great-grandmother, my great-great-grandmother all watched. So, I can't leave, I can't sell it, I can't walk away, so I have no choice, I have to fight, my back's against the wall, and I'm fighting for my home. The map, I have some slides here. The map is the solar power, the solar, the Ranger Power solar facility in Callaway County. This is fifty-eight hundred acres. We also have a twenty-three hundred acre solar farm going in across from us, another one in Bloomfield, and Ameren is putting in two thousand acres of solar. So, in Callaway County, we now have proposed eleven thousand acres. When one company comes in, beware, it will fill up really fast. There are probably people now, other companies, trying to lease land in your county that you don't know about, just like many of you didn't know about this for many, many years, it's been going on for years. When we found out about the solar that was coming, we had a neighbor that broke his nondisclosure agreement, part of his lease, and he felt bad about leasing it, and he came and told me about it. I immediately went with my son, we went to the reporter's office, we did some research, and we found these solar projects and a number of leases, and then we went to our commissioners. Guess what? They didn't know anything about it. It'd been going on for more than three years. So, they're very, very good, you all are really good at doing that. So, they want to keep it quiet as long as they can, because they really don't like these meetings, they've referred to them as lynchings. So, you know, you're very fortunate that Ranger Power has come and talked to you tonight. We've been trying for two years to get them to come to a community meeting, I've held three community meetings, I talk with my presiding commissioner every two weeks and say, "Have you been able to talk to Pete Andres yet? Can we get them here?" He's been trying since October. So far, he says they have not returned his calls. So, I don't know whether my commissioner is lying, or he's telling the truth, but they're not coming, and we have been able to get them scheduled, so. So, this is the map. Around this facility, this fifty-eight hundred acres facility, are a hundred and thirty-six adjoining properties. We have a lot of small acreage people that moved out of Columbia, and they've just bought like a few acres and put a nice home on there. And so, that's how many families are going to be impacted by this one solar facility. If you notice the little white spots in there, that don't have, no yellow on them, those are the landowners. You notice that they've built forty to sixty acre buffers around their homes, so that the solar doesn't come right up against their home. But they didn't bother to take care of their neighbors, they didn't do any concessions for them, or even think about them, all they could see was the dollar sign. So, next slide. So, our experience with the solar companies have been basically these things, this climate of secrecy that they come in under, and they split up communities by doing this, because when other people eventually find out about it, then they go and talk to the landowners, and the landowners can't really do anything at that point, because they've signed a lease. And it's very, very difficult to get out of the lease. So, our community, which was a very close-knit unified committee, we did a lot of humanitarian projects together, we worshiped together, we shared vacation Bible school among the churches, all of those kinds of things. Our community club that we have every month is almost dead. People can't get along, they don't want to see so-and-so that's on the other side. The neighbors are not talking to neighbors, family members are not talking to family members. I have a family, a neighboring family, that can't, no longer have a reunion, because they can't, they can't deal with one another. So, this is what solar has done to us in trying to come. We have a church, three or four businesses, quite a few things that are around this, and so far, we haven't been able to work out any kind of setbacks. They indiscriminately take land, no matter whether it's good land, or, they don't care. Land is graded one to eight, one being river bottom, and eight being sticks and rocks and hills. Most of the land, next slide, most of the land that Ranger Power has used for us is grade two or grade three land, and then grade four, so those three together, which are considered the top half, so we consider prime land. Ranger Power, so the facility that they're going to put on us is going to be about two-thirds of really good prime farmland. On this land, we can usually grow twice the amount of food that could be grown on, say, six or seven. So, they're taking the most productive land. The US Department of Agriculture proposes that in 2050, there will be 2.2 billion more people to feed, and to do that, we will need seventy percent more food than we're producing right now. Now, I'm asking you, if they take all the prime farmland out, and then they want us to produce seventy percent more than what we're doing, how are we going to do that? Will that create famine? Will that create a mess for your children and your grandchildren? So, you need to think ahead, and think about what this is going to be in an end situation. You can't eat electricity. Next slide. This is a slide that shows how solar energy is produced. The big red one that comes up, the big bell, that's solar energy on a summer day. It produces its maximum amount for about four hours a day. So, it's going up, and it's got a little place there where it really actually meets its full potential, and it goes back down. The yellow and the orange line are twenty percent, that's winter in the sun, and summer in the clouds. So, the blue line that's flat is the winter, so that's how much produce, they produce. The community solar farm that we have already installed near us in Columbia, Missouri, which is built for use by Columbia, and we're not against community solar, it operated last year at a twenty-five percent efficiency rate. So, is destroying your community and changing you from an agricultural to an industrial community worth an increase of twenty-five percent more electricity? Especially when they're shutting down coal plants and other things that maybe really are going to be needed, as Roger said, with more AI. Bitcoin is like using a jet plane twenty-four hours a day, as far as the amount of energy that it uses, and so, these things are coming, do you want them here? Is the question. Next slide. I'm going to go into just a few of the things that concern me about solar. Fire happens, solar companies will tell you that they don't have fire, solar panels do not catch on fire, they don't. The electrical arrays will catch on fire, they'll spark and they'll burn like any electrical thing would. The first picture up here in the corner is a lithium battery fire, and it created toxic chemicals, these are from actual news articles. In this instance, the people that, and I believe this was in New York, the people that had this battery fire were evacuated a mile radius immediately, they just had to walk out, and they had to stay away for at least three days. People one to three miles away had to stay sheltered in their home and not come out for three days. The other ones are brush fires, and that's one of the main problems of the solar things, is that the brush underneath catches on fire. Now, you'll see lots of solar pictures on solar company websites, of these really pretty pastures with beautiful grass or pollinator plants, and the solar panels there all in the sun, and it looks, you know, it's like, okay, I have to live with that. I've never seen, I've seen hundreds of pictures from many, many different solar places around the United States. In the research that we've been doing, our leadership team all does research, and we read constantly, I've never seen a solar panel farm with anything but brush or bare dirt. Some places, they don't want the brush, because it's a fire hazard, so they actually spray constantly to create dirt, which does create dust storms. I saw a solar farm creating a dust storm in an Indiana video, and you couldn't see more than maybe twenty feet, and I called the lady, and she said, "Yeah, that's, we live with that, you know, two or three times a month, we have a big dust storm, and it blows all of the soil, you know, everywhere." So, that's some of the problems with fire. Next slide. These are the big transmission lines that come, and when solar comes, big transmission lines come. The more solar that you get, the more of these big transmission lines that you get. These transmission lines also catch on fire, and we have lots of examples of those, but we just listed a few. I want you to notice the bottom one, it's a million acres that burned. So, these are not small fires. The third one, the campfire one, was only a hundred and fifty-three thousand acres, but it killed eighty-four people. And that was in California. So, these do happen, and so, you need to think about, it's not just the solar facility that you're worrying about, you have to worry about the big transmission lines that are coming, and what's that going to do to your community, and what are the dangers of that? And that's a whole nother ball of wax, because we've been fighting Grain Belt, I don't know if you've heard of that, but that's the new big wind and solar transmission line that's coming through Missouri. Next slide. Pollution, siding, and hazards. Next slide. This slide is about hazardous materials. There are ten, at least ten hazardous materials in the solar panels. They are not liquid, they're solid, and they don't just, and they're contained in the solar panels. But when the solar panels are damaged badly or destroyed, as you can see from the tornado or the hail, do you all ever have tornadoes or hail here? We had a hailstorm in Callaway County last April, and I'm still waiting for my insurance company, which, I mean, my roofing company, to come replace the siding and the roofing. My son owns the company, he is so busy, he cannot get to me. So, that's how many homes were damaged, I mean, we were just buried, and I have holes, you know, bigger than a golf ball, in the siding in my house, and my roof is ruined. So, imagine those hitting the glass solar panels. Those will be cracked and broken open. That exposes the chemicals that are in there to rainwater. So, if it does that, and it rains hard, they can be leached out, so we think that's how they come out, and they would get into the ground, or they would get into the runoff. Now, you have to think a little bit about the runoff, because when they come in, they tell you they can put this back in forty years. We don't think they can. We don't think they can, and there's some reasons why we think they can't do that. Number one, when they come in, they bring bulldozers and graders, and many of you have terraced your land so that you can work with water drainage and put in drainage tiles. They have to flatten that out because they put these solar panels in rows, and they want them to be flat so that they all, you know, reflect the same. And so that damages the soil. Some of them will tell you, "I'm taking all the top soil off, and I'm going to put it in a berm, and I'm going to plant trees on it for you. And those trees are going to grow and make a barrier for you so you don't have to look at these." All the pictures that I have seen of the trees and the berms, the berms are about maybe two feet high. They have little trees on them, maybe two foot, and 70% of them are dead because you can't plant small trees and not take care of them. And so they just plant them and leave them, and that doesn't work. You have to water them. You have to fertilize them. So the tree situation doesn't work. The top soil that's piled up there will erode over 40 years. It'll be gone. So there won't be anything to push back. The other thing that hurts your soil is the compaction of the heavy equipment that they use as they're putting in. What compaction does to your ground. We have a friend who's a farmer, and they allowed a pipeline to go through, and then they went back to trying to farm it, and they could not because of the compaction. They finally turned it into pasture land and moved on because they couldn't farm it. Another thing that can happen with the solar panels is when the rainwater comes and it leaches out, because it's so flat, there's no place for the water to go. Now, remember the drainage tiles. I don't know if you all did this, but our county was given money by the conservation department to put in drain tiles, and they put them in, and so we had a lot of terracing and drainage fixed for us so that we didn't have to worry about the water draining onto adjoining properties. When this is flattened, when they put those big pylons on to hold the solar panels, they can't miss all of those, and so they're going to start punching holes in those and ruining the drainage system. So the drainage system that is there now will not be there, and that's going to cause the water to just go wherever it can go. And it'll go over roads. It'll go into the adjoining properties. If there's a lot of water, it can go into the ponds and the wells if you have a deep well, and it's very close to where the solar is going to be. I think you need to be concerned. And so what Roger was talking about in asking for soil and water testing is very important to us anyway. Next slide. This one is about pollution. The title of this slide comes directly from Ranger Power's website. So this is what they say, and we don't believe that's true. Ranger Power may not be guilty of this, but many solars are. And this is just an example of a contractor that was subcontracted by a solar company to put in four solar farms in three states, and he created a pollution problem with every one of those. And so they got fined 1.34 million dollars. Next slide. These are siding concerns. You can see, these are from news articles. You can see that this one is very sloped. And we have a patron that has an adjoining property, and both sides of her farm are sloped like that so that all the water would run down into her yard and into her basement and into her pond where her animals drink. So this water here is not in a pond. It's not in a river. That's just the water that has run off from the solar field. And you can't see it, but on the other side of this water is a subdivision. And those people have basements full of water now. So they're filing complaints and trying to get things fixed for them, but it's damaging their homes. Over here, this family has filed a complaint with the EPA because the solar is too close to them. And I see that they even accommodated them by moving some of the solar close to their house away. But they still think that's too close, and they have a complaint in process with the solar company. And I will tell you that my house is maybe half that far from the road. I mean, my grandpa wanted to be on the road, so that's another concern. Next slide. This is the property devaluation. And this gentleman over here, can't even remember names, talked a little bit about the property evaluation. This is adjoining homes. So this is kind of a thing where we talk about property rights, and so we understand, and we are very much for property rights. But I believe that property rights should be do no harm. I think property rights are okay unless you are harming your adjoining property owners. And then you need to have some regulation on that because that's not what was meant when they talked about property rights, was destroying your families, the families that live around you. So the percentage of devaluation is 6 to 30%. Solar companies, if you look on their websites, they'll tell you there's no devaluation of homes. Now, I want to ask you to use your common sense a minute. If you have a chance, if you want to buy a house in the country, and you go out and you look at a house, a nice house, say $200,000, and right in front of this house run solar panels, so that out your window, that's all you're going to see, the solar panels. Now, you go over here, and you look at another home for the same amount of money, and it has beautiful fields, and you can see the sunset, and hear the birds singing, and it's the same amount of money. Which one would you choose? Would any amount of money cause you to buy the one with the solar right in front of you? So think about that. This lady at the bottom, you probably can't see her name. Her name is Mary McClintock Clay. And imagine that he was quoting the same thing. She did a 43-page report for the Kentucky legislators in 2022. She has 40 years of experience as a foreign assessor. She did a study herself, and some of her other assessors did that. They collected studies from University of Rhode Island or University of Michigan, whatever. Next slide. And these are some examples of how solar companies are trying to deal with, give concessions to people who have devaluation of property. So there are different solar companies trying to do different things. She says that if you own a farm that's large enough to farm, so that you have farmland that you're selling, the farmers will basically pay you 17% less for that piece of ground and the going rate, which is a lot when you have a lot of acres. And the farmers are concerned about a lot of different things, the drainage problems, the leaching of the chemicals, what the solar panels are going to do, the glare, the heat that comes off of them. I've heard the farmers all say, "Well, what about this? What about this?" So they've got a lot of concerns about whether they can even farm around that. Of course, my corn, my beans are going to be right across the road, so I'm assuming going to know what solar panels do to crops. So she says that 17% is the average devaluation that you can expect. For small farms, just pieces of property, we have a lot of people that have moved out of Columbia and have bought, you know, 30 acres and built a home there because they want to live in the country. They want to live where the birds sing and they can see the sunset, yada yada. So they're out there, and they say that their property will devalue at 30%. So that's a big chunk. So if you have a small piece of property that isn't very farmable, that's what you can expect according to her data. Next slide. This again, this industry claim is straight from Ranger Power's website, and they talked about jobs, all the many jobs that they would bring in here for you. We haven't experienced anything yet with a solar company because they're all projected yet. Nothing has been built, so we can't say, in our county, this is what happened. But I called a place in Michigan that has a place called Assimly Solar, and that was built by Ranger Power. The city supervisor was interviewed, and he was asked that question. When Ranger Power was building this and they started operation in 2019, how many local people were hired? And his answer was zero. In our experience, the only thing Ranger Power has been doing is building an inversion station for Ameren, which I think is probably where they're going to use to export their energy. And we've watched the trucks. We've been watching the trucks and the people there. We have heard of not a single person that's been hired to do the work that's been going on for the last couple of months. All the trucks there show a construction company from Colorado. So before you count your money, all the jobs that are going to happen and all the people that are going to come here and stay, and they will for a short period of time because they'll bring the construction crews in, and they will spend money in your town. They might have to use your hotels. They might have to eat in your restaurants. So they will bring a little money in while they're developing, and then they're gone, immediately five or six people. And the city supervisor said, "Yeah, from time to time, there's people roaming around, and they're looking at stuff, and we don't know who they are." So they're not local people either. Next slide. The economic impacts to a county. We have a man on our team who is an ag economist, and he's also a farmer. So we asked him if he could project how much we were going to lose on this 9,500-acre lease of leased land agriculturally. So he estimated it to be at around $9 million. And so basically, that comes out to be is about $1 million per 1,000 acres. Now, and he calculated that using what the commercial rate is for beans right now and commercial rate for corn. So he calculated it out with the bushels that are current. He said, "In 20 years, if you go back 20 years and remember what beans and corn were selling for back 20 years and look at what they're selling for now, so if you project that forward 20 years, we will be losing $28.8 million in agricultural income." So the $1 million that they're giving you, guess what? You're going to lose on the other side. So what is the advantage to that? So think that through a little bit. The revenue from the solar companies, the energy they produce and whatever, you don't get any of the electricity. It goes to another state. So you're not helping the state of Missouri at all. They don't really send anybody to live here, so that's not helping the economy at all. Your farmers, on the other hand, if they're making $9 million, they're reinvesting about half of it back into your account. They buy seed. They buy fertilizer. They buy equipment. They have their equipment fixed. All of these businesses are dependent on the farmers. We went to our small independent businesses and asked them, "If you lose 20% of your business, can you stay in business?" And they said, "No, absolutely not." So you will lose your agricultural businesses. They won't be able to survive if 9,000 acres come in here. You've got four right now, but I'm promising you that this is the floodgate. You open this one, they'll all come. So be careful what you agree to with Ranger Power because you're setting a precedent for all the other companies that will come after them. So you'll need to decide that. I thank you for letting me talk. I wanted to tell you about a couple of things. I'm part of the Missouri Land Owners Alliance. That's why you have these green shirts on. We are just a citizens group that's trying to fight to stop or at least regulate solar in our county and in the state of Missouri. It does not cost to join this organization. If you would like to join it, we would love to have you. My husband, in the green shirt, will be at the back table, and it takes you about five minutes to fill out an application. What that does is it gets you on an email, and I send out about maybe six or eight emails a year updating you on things that are going on in the state, different legislation that's happening regarding solar and wind and big transmission lines, maybe bills that you could come to a committee meeting and testify on at down at the legislature. Maybe I would ask you to contact your senator or your representative on a subject having to do with solar. So I alert you to those kinds of things that you can do. We also have some signs back there. These were left from our campaigns, and so we thought, "Well, if these people are really rabid and they really want to put something in their yard that makes a statement right away, we'll just sell them some of our signs that we have left over." So these are our leftover signs, and they say the same thing on both sides. And at the bottom is our website, moesaysno.com. And that's a really good place to go and educate yourself. And on that website, we have a lot of articles and studies and that kind of thing. We also have a Callaway page where we post different events and things that are happening. Audrain has a page. Our webmaster said that she would be more than happy if half a dozen or so of you do join the Land Owners Alliance, that she would be glad to build you a Henry County page. And she will set it up for you, and she will maintain it for you free of charge. So if you want to get on the internet, that's a good way to do that. And then you can use the Mo Says No, and you won't have to worry with the website. You can just read that and tell her what you want to add. We have a Facebook page, which is very long and hard to remember. I did not name it. It's called Callaway County, Missouri: Commercial Solar Invasion. Nobody's going to be able to remember that. I have slips of paper with both the website and the Facebook page on the back table where we're selling the signs, and you're free to pick one of those up. So you can check out the Facebook page if you want to do that. Again, I thank you. I urge you very seriously to educate yourselves as quickly as possible. I urge you to talk with your planning and zoning people, talk with your commissioners, and talk with them often, and let them know that you're active, that you're not just going to send an email and tell them that you don't want this or you do want it, and let it go. What I think you should do is send them an email, and in a couple of weeks, give them a phone call and ask them if they got the email. Try to talk to somebody about it. And then go see them. Go and visit them. Make them put a face with that name and tell them your story so that they know where you are, why you're upset, why you want it this way or why you want it that way. If they are honorable, they will do what the county wants them to do, what the people want them to do. So the majority of the people should be able to speak. So make yourself one of those people, and, you know, hopefully, you'll be on the right side, and the majority will win. But I do urge you to get involved. Thank you.[1791.21][1791.21][applause]